Steve Sherlock here for Franklin Matters, Franklin Public Radio, available anywhere, anytime on the internet at wfpr.fm within your browser or in the local Franklin, Mass. FM radio dial. Yeah, that thing you know with the knobs or the push buttons 102.9. Here virtually with another candidate for our biennial election in November, Reese Hanson for school committee. Thank you for doing this, Reese.
Thank you so much for having me here, Steve. I appreciate all the work you do for our town. And this is just a really wonderful opportunity to get a chance to connect with everyone across Franklin and all the people who I haven't had the opportunity to meet yet. Hopefully we'll meet in the future. But thank you for taking the time to hear about why I'm running for school committee.
Yeah, I think it's important. Clearly, we're a community cable organization that I'm associated with. And this is exactly what we're trying to do in terms of amplifying the public good. We appreciate all your candidates stepping up. We know it's volunteer. We know it's a lot of time. We do the same thing. And you're going to be running the schools for our behalf. And yeah, that's an important matter. So thank you for taking the time to do so.
Absolutely. It is. It's a big responsibility. And I'm excited to be putting my name out there as someone who's willing to take it on.
Good. So we'll start with, okay, Steve's talking with Reese. What is your Franklin story? You can tell us briefly or at length about your road to Franklin or your life within Franklin and your involvement with the community.
Sure. So my wife and I lived together in the Boston area for several years before deciding that we wanted to leave the city. And we found a home here in Franklin in August 2019. And we pretty rapidly fell in love with the community, visited the library, my son, who was two and a half at the time, he and I made a lot of, we took a lot of opportunities to join the groups there that they run for kids and visiting the farmers markets. We got to visit the harvest festival, or at least the same festival this time of year. I don't remember.
Right. It's a harvest festival this time. It's the strawberry stroll in June.
Yes, yeah. And started to meet our neighbors. And of course, that came to a sudden grinding halt in March of that year.
Something happened. COVID, yes.
Exactly. And of course, not that year, but 2020.
2020, yeah.
And so we were really starting to kind of build our footholds, but then we were indoors and navigating that. And it was really wonderful that our local supports like the library continued to offer outreach during that time as we figured out our lives. But then, once we began to be able to go outside again, my child was back in preschool again. Connecting with other parents was really what felt like the really strong start of building that community and meeting people from all across town. Once my child was in kindergarten, that came with all sorts of new opportunities to meet other parents. And that was also the time where I started to find opportunities to give back to the town in relatively small ways, certainly smaller than this step. But going in and reading to my child's kindergarten class, chaperoning field trip, volunteering for sports day, painting lines on the field for FISA last year was were really great ways to meet other people and give what I could. And it really felt like home very quickly post-COVID, that we felt a real sense of belonging here. And seeing my child go from two and a half when we got here to almost nine now, build friendships, relationships, and participate in all those kinds of growing up activities has been phenomenal. So we have a lot of Franklin pride. And at this point, I'm looking forward to continuing to build more relationships and through campaigning and hopefully giving service to the town through a role on school committee. I can keep giving back to Franklin from what Franklin's given to us.
Thank you for that. And civil discourse certainly is, I think, as you're aware, is a key component of our democratic republic form of government. The political party divide unfortunately is wider now than ever. And as an individual coming certainly in the community, but then for the school committee, what can you do or would you do to help bridge or avoid that divide?
I think that's a great question, Steve. And I think I come in with some strengths in that area already. I'm a clinical social worker and have been working in some form of public service since high school, really. And throughout the course of my career and pre-career, the time that I was volunteering and working in other, not formally social work roles, but still support scenarios like at children's shelters. I've just, I've worked with people from a wide variety of cultural backgrounds and with very different values than my own. And through those relationships, it's been very crucial to find ways to communicate, to support people in pursuing goals that I may not set for myself, for example. And to that extent, I think now 15 years into my career, one of my strongest skills as a clinician is listening. I'm very genuinely interested in people's stories, hearing about people's values, experience, understanding who they are is the most rewarding part of my work. Or I should say, one of the most rewarding parts, helping them reach their goals is also very rewarding. But it involves listening to people non-judgmentally and with the goal of understanding. And that's a perspective I plan to bring to school committee. I think people who know me hopefully experience that I bring that perspective to our conversations as well. And I'm certainly not doing the therapy side of things in one-to-one conversations, but I care about what people have to say. I welcome thoughts from all Franklin residents. And I hope people who recognize me from this interview feel welcome to approach me. And I'll certainly be approaching people anyway to tell them about who I am and encourage you to vote for me. And I think I have some other skills that can help bridge that divide in terms of like what I put forth. So certainly being open to receiving and hearing from people, but also who I am and how I communicate, I think, can be helpful in that way. So for me, I tend to make decisions falling back on like a handful of core values, like integrity, trustworthiness, compassion. That tends to be how I make decisions on how to behave in my day-to-day life and certainly how I would think about decisions I'm making on school committee. But I hold the values very tightly, but specific opinions I have, I'm very open to having those changed, especially when I hear new information or hear other people's well-justified perspectives on matters. I often find myself thinking differently about things that my first instinct was one way, and then I see different nuances. On the committee, I plan to ask a lot of questions to fully explore issues, identify risks and opportunities, and make sure that when I'm putting my vote out there, it's well-informed. I want to understand what I'm voting for and what the potential consequences of that are. And finally, I want to communicate my thoughts back to the community thoughtfully, patiently, hopefully convey those ideas in a manner that even people that disagree with me can at least feel like my decisions have been well-considered and not, you know, not kind of off the cuff or related to certain paradigms or dogma.
Good. Thank you for that. You've covered a bunch of, I think, respectfully, the communication aspects. The next question is, what experience or background would help you bring, would help you that you would bring to this particular role? Or another way to phrase it, what do you bring to the table that would help potentially set you apart from some of the people also running the schools?
Yeah. So I mentioned that I'm a clinical social worker. And for those unfamiliar with the social work field, that means I'm a mental and behavioral health therapist and provide services connecting people I work with in that capacity to other related services as well. And one of those services I provide, one of the settings I've provided therapy in are schools. So I've got, I've got experience working within schools and working with the staff of schools before. Examples of those are collaborating with teachers, school social workers, and guidance counselors, hearing their observations about clients I'm working with to inform my work, as well as sharing my own thoughts that can sometimes help them with tricky classroom management situations or finding ways to meet a student's needs during the school day. I've also served as an advocate during IEP 504 and disciplinary meetings for people I've been working with. And I've actually as well provided therapy inside schools when I was working at a clinic in Arlington that worked with the school system there to bring clinicians from the clinic into the school to alleviate some of the workload of the school social workers and guidance counselors there. I also think that through my training as a social worker, we're trained to think in terms of systems and try to take holistic views of those systems. And systems are anything from like an individual, a family, a community, or of course, schools. And taking that holistic perspective lets me identify strengths, resources, and opportunities in places that maybe are not readily apparent, but helps me say, for example, with an individual, you're thinking this way about this situation. Is that applicable to what's challenging you right now? How do we take this strength and apply it to where your needs are? And so I plan to bring that to the school system. I also want to mention one other, this is not my personal experience, that is relevant, but one other resource I have is I'm married to someone who I think is a fantastic woman. I think a lot of people who have met her think that as well. And she is a 16-year veteran of Boston Public, who just this September started, began her first year teaching in Milford. So she's local now. We are not having to be without her for two to three hours a day just for her commute. And she's just, I mean, my opinion is that she's done phenomenal work through her career. She's been a teacher and a special educator for the bulk of that time, but has also taken on a variety of leadership roles, including serving for three years to her Boston School as instructional leader during the peak of the COVID pandemic. So she took on that role not knowing what was coming. And it was like was settling in. And then all of a sudden, everything she had planned, she needed to adjust it all for how she was going to support her teaching team and also help the teachers understand how to support their students in a model that we've never dealt with before.
Agreed. Yeah. It was a massive change, challenge.
So I, you know, I think I have a lot of love and respect and pride in the work she did there. And she's also written curriculum. So how that applies to me is that in my career work, I've turned to her and said, here's the scenario. Here's what I'm thinking of recommending as adaptations for this student. What do you think? And she's given me really valuable feedback, both about ideas I have that might not be feasible for whatever reason, as well as ideas that might be more appropriate. And overall provides a thoughtful perspective about schools that she'll continue to provide for me in this role. She can continue to be a sounding board for those kinds of decisions that I have to make in the role on school committee.
Sounds good. And from a school district perspective, the redistricting effort that took the last couple of years in several phases is now behind us. What do you see as the key priority for the school district?
Absolutely. I mean, I think it's surprising to hear you say it's behind us. From my perspective, the decision's been made, the move is complete, but now is the implementation. And I will say thus far this year, my child, our family, has had a great experience at Lincoln Elementary. I know other families have faced a lot of challenges. So I feel like that that's where we're at now is how do we support the families who are facing challenges related to the redistricting? How do we alleviate burdens related to like kind of fundamental structural issues like the traffic? And then we also need to make sure that we're holding our administration accountable for following through on the benefits that were proposed from this redistricting. I really liked what Mr. Jager had to say about what he saw as perceived benefits in terms of maintaining diversity of opportunity for students, whereas that may have been lost if we kept separate elementary schools, the additional opportunities for collaboration among professional teams and teaching teams. I really want to make sure that that's being followed through on and making sure that in my role on school committee that we're giving the administration and the district the support they need to be able to fully realize those opportunities. I think above all, you know, in the face of big changes and budget cuts, that in my role, the priority is going to be making sure the professionals who make Franklin Public Schools what it is, have the support they need from the committee, from the town as a whole, to continue delivering high-quality education and other opportunities to our students. And I think the town committee, I'm sorry, I think the school committee is a really important part of facilitating that communication as well, both through the meetings themselves, of course, and in taking the time to do things like talk to you to get a half-hour distillation like Dave Callahan, the chair, has done with you in the past.
Yep. Thank you for that. And certainly you're aware, the school district is responsible for the largest portion of the town of Franklin's budget. And especially with the budget challenges we've had, what are your ideas to help resolve the structural deficit in the operating budget?
Absolutely. So and I want to state that it's Franklin is not unusual in having the schools be the major of the budget. That is typical for most towns. But at this time, my perspective is that the schools have done very extensive work trying to address the structural gaps. Redistricting has reduced the facilities costs and brought resources together so that they can be used more equitably and that more students can access them. And we've also had a huge amount of staff cuts that have really brought the current operations in line with the budgets. So my perspective is that what we need as a next step is legislation that's going to keep the schools from continuing to bear the brunt of further budget cuts. Now, this is more on the side of a town council, but I've heard people who are running for council talking about creating a fixed allocation. I wish I could claim this as my idea, but it is an idea I support. And for those who are unaware, a fixed allocation is essentially that we set a percentage and the schools would get that percentage of the town budget. So while it wouldn't mean that there would be no further cuts on the school side, it would bring in predictability and insulate the schools from bearing the brunt of further cuts. So with that having been said, I do think there are ways that we should continue to work to make sure that the budget we have for the schools is being used efficiently and effectively. One of the things that I would want to take a look at is making sure resources that we're paying out of district for are utilized and bringing in good value, that they're supporting our teachers in the way that they are meant to be. So one example I have of this is that curriculum materials that we buy, those can be very, very useful in making sure that our students get thorough education. But my family has had the experience of our child bringing home what we know to be a fairly expensive workbook that has had just a couple of pages covered in it and all the rest is blank. And I'm guessing other families have experienced that as well. So I would want to question, are we getting the value out of this curriculum that we're paying for if we're not using the materials that come with it? Similarly, I want to take a look at technology supports and potential subscription ongoing services that we're paying for, making sure they're bringing in good value. The ones I know of, I can say, do seem to be bringing in good value. My son is a big fan of using ST Math and likes their little penguin character there. I've seen his math skills grow through the use of that program. But I don't have the perspective on what's used at all levels and how they're utilized. So making sure that we're getting a good return on our costs for those programs and systems. And finally, along the same lines, I would want to ensure that any outside consultations are appropriately enhancing our educational system in ways that cannot be accomplished with internal resources and that we're not paying outsized costs for vague promises that don't actually lead to like specific benefits for schools and our teaching staff. Finally, one other thing that I'm, I'd really am passionate about taking a look at is looking for opportunities to enhance the schools through collaboration with other entities in town. I think a really great example of this is something you're involved with, Steve, which is Blast with Cali Keating, the Franklin Public Library. I saw your write-up about your work with that in a recent Franklin Matters. And I wonder about, are there other opportunities for collaboration between the public library and the public schools? The schools are without librarians right now. And so there's a need for those people who would typically be teaching media literacy and research skills. That I'm certain that there are plenty of teachers who could provide that information, but they're also already responsible for their classes. And does that fit in or not? So if there are opportunities for bringing in the library to help both teachers and students build media literacy, build research skills, recently, we were talking about AI at a school committee meeting and following a comment I had made. One of the questions that had come up is, who in the schools would teach AI literacy to the teachers and the students? And without librarians, maybe there's a potential for collaboration there. Similarly, I mentioned when I worked in Arlington at a clinic there, that those school systems brought in clinicians from our clinic to help supplement the work that the social workers and guidance counselors in the schools were doing. Is there a similar model that could work for Arlington schools? We have a few different mental health clinics here in town. And I can speak from experience that very often clinicians who work with children, their day starts at 3:00 PM, and we're generally very excited to have work to do before 3:00 PM. So I can, I would think that there are people who would be eager to do that work if it fits into the Franklin Public School model, if there are ways that we can find it a useful way to support our schools. So those are just a couple examples of the outside-the-box thinking I'm talking about, where we can collaborate and strengthen our schools in ways that don't really touch the school budget or do so in very low-cost ways.
Yeah, I'm glad you picked up on the Ms. O'Leary on the reading side, coordinating with Ms. Cali on the library side. And their program, thoughtfully on the schools, was Meet Me in the Middle with the three middle schools coming together. It was just perfectly phrased. It's off to a roaring start, from what I understand so far with school. I also benefited because I took access to the six books that the middle schoolers were reading. And I read all six and actually met a couple of middle schoolers at a lemonade stand during the summer. They had not yet read any of them. So I gave them some ideas that, oh, if you like this, then do this, do this, do this. So I'm curious to see if they did follow through on those. And to the extent that Ms. O'Leary's been the forefront there, hopefully there'll be other collaborators likewise, maybe from other specialties, whether in the language arts or even in the science perspective and, you know, other STEM pieces. Because yeah, it is one of the things that over time we do need to restore to the extent possible. And maybe we build that with the collaborations rather than just adding it to the budget, because the budget itself, we may not be able to do that right away. So.
Absolutely. We have so many professionals and just really thoughtful people in the town who can bring diverse skill sets in and contribute it. And I think a lot of people who are eager and willing to do so, if only they're given the opportunity. And I'm glad you enjoyed the middle school books as well. I found one of the rewarding parts of being a father has been reading books that I enjoyed as a child and revisiting them as I share them with my kid. We've been reading Roald Dahl recently, and that's
Oh, yes.
You know, quite a fun time, revisiting what I have great memories of, but don't remember all the specifics of those stories.
Sure. No, it was something that as my daughters were growing through schools and they've aged, now they're grown. But yeah, I was, that was one of my entrees. As an English major background, oh, what are you reading? Oh, you're reading that? I'll read. So I was reading the same thing so that if they had questions or how to do this or how to do that, I was able to talk on a book level with them for that. And then just stayed with it because there are a lot of good YA books. There really is. So yeah, that's another whole topic. But I'm not campaigning for a book reading.
We'll start our book club later.
A book club later. Absolutely. Yes, definitely, for sure. We covered the questions, but being mindful of, while we've covered the topics, there may be another topic or something you would like to add so that the residents and voters would, you know, be aware of why you have the opportunity to take this time.
Absolutely. So well, as I mentioned, this has been something that I've been looking about. I've been looking at what can I give to my community. And as I've been following the work of the school committee, I've realized I think I have a work ethic and I think I have a perspective that could be really valuable here. I think I can serve the community really well. And that's ultimately, I'm feeling enthusiastic and motivated to really give this time and effort to strengthen our schools and serve the community here. And I'm really looking forward to doing so. I hope you choose me as one of the people to do that work for you. I mentioned earlier, I value people's stories. I value hearing the wide variety of perspectives. If you see me in person, please come talk to me. Tell me what you want to see in the schools. Tell me what your thoughts are about school committee and its role here in Franklin. Tell me about what books you're reading that have been really awesome and why you love them. And also you can email me. Steve said that he would be putting that information in the description, in the data about the video. And it's, if you don't want to look there, it's schools@reishansen.com, R-E-I-S-H-A-N-S-E-N. And again, thank you, Steve, for taking the time here with me today. Thank you, everyone who's taking the time to watch this. I really appreciate your interest in what's going on in our community. And I hope that I'm somebody that you can feel confident will do good work for our community.
Thank you. And thank you, listeners, as well for participating. Stay tuned. We've got more of these coming. And a quick reminder as well to clearly listen to all of these to make that informed vote on or before November 4. And then the final reminder, we do this because Franklin matters.
Thank you, Steve.
This program was made possible by your Franklin friends and neighbors, good folks just like you. Thanks for supporting Franklin TV. And thanks for watching.